All right, I would like to call the Monday, June 7, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order. And first we'll start by confirming that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed to roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Would all who are able please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment of Silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we don't have any awards and proclamations today, so that will take us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to come to the podium and speak to the commission about any item that does not appear on today's agenda. I see that we maybe have one person who's attending virtually that may want to speak as well, so if you are a virtual participant, please raise your hand via Zoom and we can unmute you so you can participate as well. Is there anybody that would like to speak today? I don't see a raised hand, so we'll go ahead and close Citizens Forum. We don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 24, 2021.
Would any commissioners like to remove that item from the consent agenda? And if not?
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve the minutes of May 24, 2001.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 24, 2021. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes, 5-0. Administration.
7.1, approve resolution number 21-7963, naming the new pavilion at Dean Evans Stadium, the John and Kim Veneer Family Pavilion, in accordance with the philanthropic naming options contained within the City of Salina Municipal Facility Naming Guidelines.
Mr. Hammond.
Hello, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Jeff Hammond, Deputy Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here to present to you the resolution for naming of the pavilion at Dean Evans Stadium. As part of the renovation of Dean Evans Stadium, Salina Baseball Enterprises commissioned the construction of a new lower pavilion behind home plate. This open concept pavilion allows spectators to bring in their own seating and have a behind-home-plate view of the game. As you may recall, all areas of the Berkeley Family Recreational Area were designated as a qualified facility to be named via resolution 20-7851. Salina Baseball Enterprise Representative Byron Tomlin spoke to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on April 21, and they recommended approval of the naming initiative and voted to advance it to the city commission. The proposed name of the pavilion at Dean Evans Stadium is the John and Kim Veneer Family Pavilion. The John and Kim Veneer Family Pavilion naming request falls under the philanthropic category of the City of Salina Municipal Facility Naming Guidelines. To review the steps of the naming guidelines leading up to this proposed resolution, the city clerk verified compliance of the naming initiative on April 22. The petition was not needed for this naming initiative as it meets the guideline for the philanthropic naming. On May 19, at the regularly scheduled Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, opportunity was provided for public comment as required by step three of the municipal facility naming guideline. Public notice of that meeting was on May 7. We arrived today at the last steps for the municipal family facility naming guidelines to review the naming initiative, hold a public hearing, review the signage and action by the city commission. Public notice for this meeting, for this public hearing, was provided on May 24. The proposed resolution and signage is in your packet. As a final point, this naming initiative is fully funded by Salina Baseball Enterprises. Byron Tomlin with Salina Baseball Enterprises is available, and if you have questions, we can also answer those at the time. But I think Byron would like to give a few words as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hammond. And if Dr. Tomlin would like to come up?
Byron Tomlin, board members, Salina Baseball Enterprises. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to say a few words about this. I just kind of wanted to let you know and assure you the procedure that we followed and tried to respect in this naming request. As a board member and a co-director along with Kenny Hancock, we first asked our board to approve of this request that we would like to name this pavilion after John and Kim Veneer family. My first phone call was to the Evans family and wanted their blessing before we started because, obviously, of being involved with Dean Evans Stadium in the beginning, we wanted to fully respect their opinion. And so without their go-ahead, we would not have even started the project. But we have their family blessing. They were very excited. They know John and Kim, and so I have the three children's approval of the Evans family. So then Salina Baseball had to approach John and Kim because it's our idea. And after a few arm-twisting, we got them to agree with that. Their generosity to this project is significant, and without their support, along with the Berkeley family and other donors, this project couldn't have been done. And we come to you to recognize not only their involvement in this project, but to recognize their philanthropy across the state as well as this community. So it's our intention to name this pavilion the John and Kim Veneer Family Pavilion, and that's why we're here. So I appreciate your time. I just wanted to assure you that we've respected all the necessary steps that we feel to do this with everyone's involved permission before we brought this request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that I haven't answered.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Tomlin?
I'm here.
Thank you very much. The Veneer family name, obviously, has been associated with so many philanthropic projects around the community, and this latest act of generosity by John and Kim is very much appreciated. And I'm glad and very grateful that they've made this commitment to the project. So thank you very much for securing that donation, and thanks to them for their generosity.
One quick side note, if I may. As you know, we are dedicating the stadium this Saturday, and it's from 5 to 8 with baseball and a ceremony. And we certainly would invite, we've invited the whole public. And in our previous letter to you, we certainly hope that you might find the time to attend. The ceremony itself is from 7 to 8. And all three Evans family children, Dean and Grace's children, will be in attendance, we're happy to say. And so we look forward to honoring them and their hometown with the dedication of Dean Evans on Saturday. So we certainly would welcome everyone's attendance at that.
The game is first and then the ceremony?
I'm sorry?
Is the game, you said the ceremony is from 7 to 8?
There will be baseball exhibitions, games from 5 to 7.
7, okay.
The ceremony from 7 to 8, and then exhibition baseball from 8 to 9:30 after the ceremony. All of the Legion teams will be, the local Legion teams will be participating in those exhibition games, with the final game being the Falcons, our senior team, against the alumni. And no, I'm not going.
I was gonna ask.
You know I wouldn't make it even to first base for them pulling the muscle.
I was just gonna kind of look at fellow members of the governing body and ask why we weren't asked to field a team. I mean, I see a lot of potential right here.
90 feet never looks so long as when you're standing at home plate.
Correct, absolutely. And I wouldn't hit it to begin to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hopefully, we'll have EMTs on staff.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? And if not, I would bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve resolution number 21-7963, naming the new lower pavilion at Dean Evans Stadium, the John and Kim Veneer Family Pavilion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7963, naming the new pavilion at Dean Evans Stadium, the John and Kim Veneer Family Pavilion. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes gratefully, 5-0. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and thanks again to the Veneer family. All right. That takes us to item 7.2.
7.2, SFC Global Supply Chain Economic Development Incentive Amendment.
Mr. Schrag.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you well know, responding to economic development prospects is not an exact science by any means. We've had some recent success with what's called Salina SFC Global Supply Chain, which we know as Schwanz, as well as Great Plains. In some of the history leading up to that, we received a request, and we responded, and you, as the governing body, agreed to pledge matching funds to two different grant applications. One was with the Economic Development Administration, a federal grant that we recently were able to announce with the assistance of Senator Moran, the other being a Kansas Department of Transportation grant. So we had committed local funds as matching funds for those two grant applications, and we also considered an industrial revenue bond request from Schwanz as well. And so going into that EDA grant application, we were responding to Schwanz's request and their assistance from Burns &amp; McDonald. And so the initial application was for $9.9 million of EDA funding. It was targeted at site improvements that Schwanz needed to make what is now their site developable by rerouting water and sewer and above-ground stormwater runoff from that site so that they could free it up to develop as their current campus. And so we went into that process hopeful that, or Schwanz went into that process more so than us, I guess, hopeful that EDA would fund that amount as well as those particular improvements. And so the feedback we got from EDA was that the nature of the proposed improvements were private in terms of addressing the site improvements, rerouting the water and sewer service lines, and those were not eligible expenses for EDA funding. And those were expenses that essentially Schwanz would have to cover, the grant couldn't cover. We were able to have an ongoing dialogue with EDA staff about can we transition that application to eligible expenses and secure some of the funding. And I would say that, you know, $4 million was kind of the top end that EDA indicated when they responded back to us at the outset. So over a number of months, we were able to modify our application. Well, I'm sorry, I should back up. As part of our commitment, we also said that we would address improvements to the Centennial Ditch drainage in that area. Centennial Ditch currently exists, but it backs up, and it floods Centennial Drive, and it impacts Schwanz's transportation and their ability to access their site in a flood condition. So our commitment was the RAB financing, the local match for the two grants, and improving the Centennial Ditch at city expense. And so our intention was to fund that out of our annual operating expenditures. So when the EDA responded that the proposed uses weren't eligible and they needed to be public improvements, we revisited the needed improvements for the project. We had KDOT funding, we had funding for Centennial Road improvements, and then we had the Centennial Ditch project. So we were able to resubmit and modify our application and secure funding for the Centennial Ditch by way of grant funds rather than having to fund that out of city annual operating budget. So that all kind of was solidified here in the last 30 days or so with the announcement of the EDA grant. Schwanz has then said, well, you know, that grant funding fell way short of what we thought our bottom line benefit was going to be by way of an EDA grant. So their request was, of the $650,000 of economic development funds that you had committed to the project, would you be willing to direct that as a cash grant to Schwanz to help offset the expenses that we're now incurring for water and sewer relocation and storm sewer improvements in recognition that you've got essentially about $3.1 million worth of grant funding that's available for the Centennial Ditch project that would have been your expense previously. And I think I did use the term windfall in the blue sheet, but that may have been an overstatement. It's not a windfall to the extent that that's funding that's available free and clear for us to use, but it is grant funding that is applicable to an expense that we'd previously committed to in terms of the Centennial Ditch improvement. So, you know, as everything shook out, Schwanz's, their bottom line did not play out as well as they might have expected by way of the EDA grant, since everything that they hoped to fund was deemed private improvement. Our bottom line was favorably impacted by the EDA grant in terms of being eligible for the Centennial Ditch work, being grant-funded rather than funded at our annual expense. And so it did seem like a valid request to bring to you. We, at the end of the day, we are netting financially better by about $3 million because of the EDA grant redirection. As we've discussed previously, as part of strategic planning in today's budget study session, and I'm sure you recall, we have a sales tax economic development fund that has annual expenditures and then has a fund balance. So that $650,000 allocation was out of that fund balance. It's been held back. It's still available. And going forward, we do replenish that fund with an allocation to sales tax revenue, but it is pretty much break even, given our commitments to the EDO and SDI and another ongoing economic development incentive that has a little bit more time to run out. So having said all that, I'm kind of recapping, but the redirection of the EDA funds was a financial benefit to us and our bottom line, and the request of redirecting the economic development incentive funds didn't seem unreasonable, and I committed that I'd bring it forward to you for your consideration. So it's staff's recommendation that we go ahead and honor that request, recognizing the investment that Schwanz made and recognizing the grant shortfall that kind of played itself out. But with that, I mean, your options are, you could vote to authorize that reallocation of funds, you could postpone consideration if there's additional information that you'd like, or you could vote to deny it, and that would essentially result in denying Schwanz's request. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
I've got a quick question, Mike. After, after talking to you today about the windfall, I go, really? We got a windfall? Well, not quite. The 3.1, was that going to be debt-serviced?
Yeah, we, most likely, that would have had to been a capital improvement project we would have.
Did we show that on a budget? I mean, was that budgeted prior that'll go away, or is that something we had not dealt with yet?
Yeah, we hadn't, other than making the commitment to it, we had not dealt with it because we hadn't designed the improvement or prepared.
Because I couldn't remember, because we didn't go through all, you know, our budgeting today, but I just wondered if we had set aside X number of dollars to service that in the future. So I guess that was.
Others and staff knowing that that was an expense that we'd have to factor in, but then as the grant played itself out relative to the budget, we could see that.
See, I was hoping for a windfall, that we had already budgeted for some debt servicing that we did. So I was looking for a windfall.
Look what you're just sending in before it hits our bank.
It was a known expense that we were able to avoid.
Okay, good. Okay. Thank you for the answer.
And I had a question. With all of the numbers going back and forth, our initial commitment to the project was the $650,000 incentive plus the road improvements that we had estimated at like, what, 3.1?
Correct. And that was a $900,000 match to KDOT funds that would total approximately $3 million.
Okay. So, okay, so our original commitment was going to be all-in. What was our original total package that we were going to be responsible for?
Basically, that 900 plus the 650, so 1.55.
Okay.
And this, that was the matching component. Then we had the unquantified Centennial Ditch project.
And that would have been an additional however many millions to get that taken care of? Like, I think maybe $3 million was used as a placeholder?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So basically, we're looking at a $1.5 million savings by going with this route?
Yes. We, you could account for it in a number of different ways. We would have, at this point, we'd have the 900,000 plus the 650 match plus 650 to Schwanz, so we had about 2.1, when previously we would have been at 1.5 plus $2 million plus for the Centennial Ditch project. So we're definitely coming out ahead. The unknown is what our cost would have been for a Centennial Ditch if we were fully funding it and trying to, you know, manage that project scope to our budget.
Okay, thank you. And we do have two actions that we take on this, correct? We have the reallocation, and then we have the, then we have the second resolution, or are they both covered? Just want to make sure.
Yeah, the resolution that's in there was one that you previously acted on.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. All right. That's all I have. Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor Hodges.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the reallocation of $650,000 of Salina Economic Development Incentive Program funds from EDA grant local match funds to an economic development incentive grant to SFC Global.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reallocate $650,000 from the Salina Economic Development Incentive Program funds from the EDA grant local match funds to an economic development incentive grant to SFC Global. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. We don't have any development business today under other business, and I should have looked at Giovanna before the meeting started, but 9.1 is the board appointment reassignment. And thank you for making notes for me. But a lot of you may not be aware that even while we're serving on the communicate, city commission, we have additional committee and board responsibilities outside the commission. And our new commissioner, Commissioner Peck, has been gracious enough to pick up the following responsibilities due to the vacancies left by Commissioner France. So Commissioner Peck will be on the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission, the North Central Regional Planning Commission, and the Salina Celine County Building Authority. So I would like to thank Commissioner Peck again for rearranging his schedule and for fulfilling these commitments. And do we need to take any action on this?
Yeah, I think previously you just announced, you kind of court-mated.
We just announced it? Okay, okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. And with that, we are at 9.2, a request for executive session on economic development.
Carl.
Does that come to me?
I don't know.
Is this written as you'd like it presented?
Thirty minutes.
In 30 minutes, okay. All righty. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subject of financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation based upon the need to discuss data relating to the financial affairs or trade secrets of partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The opening meeting will resume in this room at 4:55.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Right. We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session. Resume, the open meeting will resume at 4:55 PM. Could we have, and I would like to note, it looks like that there could be possible action to follow for those who are interested.
Yes, we'll see how the conversation goes. Most likely, it'll be an action item that will have to be prepared for a future.
For a future agenda? Okay, great. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0, and we'll be back at 4:55. All right, we're back in session, and it looks like we're going to need another 30 minutes to continue this executive session.
Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subject of financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation based upon the need to discuss data relating to the financial affairs or trade secrets of partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess back into executive session for another 30 minutes. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0, and we will resume the open session at 5:30.
Are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
Yes.
I move the city commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes, for 20 minutes, excuse me, to discuss the subject of financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSAA 75-4319B4. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:46, 5:46 PM. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess back into executive session for 20 minutes. The open meeting will resume in this room at, did you say 5:46?
It'd be 5:51.
I'm sorry. That wouldn't be right either.
5:51.
5:51. Oh, thank you. Yes, I said 20, didn't I?
I was sitting here doing my math.
Mike's the time guy here. 5:51. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in open session to have some. We're back in open session to have some further discussion regarding the request for some economic development incentives on behalf of Superior, and I don't know where we want to go ahead, and we'll begin that with Mr. Schreg.
Yeah, I'll volunteer to provide a background update, and I'd like to start by saying that on my phone, on speakerphone, is Sarah Steele with Gilmore &amp; Bell, who is our bond counsel and provides us legal assistance as relates to topics like this, industrial revenue bonds in particular. And so, the matter before you, city commissioners, is a request for economic development funding for a project, as you mentioned, for, and I want to make sure I get the name right, Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services Company, that is currently probably most commonly known as Superior Plumbing, but they have multiple divisions of their corporation. And so, you've heard from them, and you've heard a recommendation from the Salina Economic Development Organization with respect to financing of their request. The thing that I think bears pointing out is by a resolution adopted in 1991, we have a policy in place as it relates to constitutional tax abatements. And so, that's something that we've done much more regularly, much more almost as an entitlement. If they meet the criteria spelled out in that resolution, the math is there to calculate an abatement amount. However, constitutional tax abatements are limited to manufacturing articles of commerce and warehousing and interstate commerce, and so, that's a pretty limited scope. As an alternative, you also have the authority to consider industrial revenue bond financing, and that is broader in terms of what is an eligible use of those funds. It has the net effect of a property tax abatement, and that's a negotiable amount. It could be a full property tax abatement, or any other amount that you as a governing body determine. And then it also can include sales tax abatement for, or a sales tax exemption for materials and equipment for establishing a new business associated with the industrial revenue bond financing. So, in light of this particular project, constitutional tax abatements are not available. The eligibility requirements are not met. So the item that's before you is consideration of industrial revenue bond financing. So that then leaves to you, in light of what you've heard in the executive session, the specifics of the project, determining, number one, whether you want to entertain proceeding at all, and secondly, if so, percentage that you would entertain for property tax abatement, whether you would consider sales tax exemption. And there's, as you know, from having done this recently, there's a very detailed process to make all this happen. So, this evening, what would be helpful is just that initial direction confirming whether you wish to proceed with consideration of industrial revenue bonds. If so, a percentage of abatement of property taxes, whether you wish to consider sales tax exemption, and then one other, is by way of an agreement that'll have to be entered into at a future date, one other item is whether you wish to have that agreement attach, what we commonly refer to as clawbacks, but to make that percentage abatement subject to fulfilling employment-level commitments. And that's something that's commonly done in between staff and Sarah Steele with Gilmore &amp; Bell, we could factor that in if that's something that you wish to have be part of that agreement. So, I hope that's helpful. You know, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions, and Sarah Steele's on the line. She can answer them in greater detail than I can, and can certainly speak more specifically to the procedural steps of public notice in a public hearing and cost-benefit analysis and some of the things that'll have to happen if you instruct us to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Schreg. And I just want to acknowledge the applicants who are here on behalf of Superior this evening. They've got some exciting growth in the works and are bringing some, a lot of new jobs here that are well above our current median wage thresholds. So, that being said, we need to deliberate amongst ourselves as to where we're going to.
Do you want to ask one technical question? Do industrial revenue bonds need to be approved before the expenses are incurred?
Sarah, did you hear that question?
And the answer is no.
Thank you.
So she heard the question. The answer to your question is no.
There are different restrictions in this tax assessment from federal income taxes. This is not. So, there is not a restriction.
Thank you.
And just to refresh everyone, what we have in front of us is a request for a 60% property tax abatement over 10 years, as well as for sales tax exemptions, and...
And if it's helpful, the EDO deliberated, and they came to you with a recommendation of 20%.
Right.
I guess our first decision for consensus is to, if we want to move forward on this, and I think that we do.
I do.
Look across the panel.
I think we all do.
Yes. Next question is, at what level?
You know, we have kind of charged the EDO with, you know, with kind of being the point person on some of these projects, and so, I think at this point, I would probably follow their recommendation with their deliberations they've had, which I think they came to us with a 20% tax abatement on property taxes for 10 years, and then 100% sales tax abatement on material costs for 10 years also. I think to be fiscally responsible, we do need to address the clawback portion dealing with job growth, which from hearing the information from Superior Contracting, I do not believe that will be a concern at all, but I do believe to be responsible, we do need to put something in there dealing with that.
Any other questions or comments?
That sums up my feelings and thoughts, exactly.
I agree with that point of view as well. What's the EDO for, and they consider actually many more of these than actually come to us. I'm comfortable with their recommendation.
And I guess I'd ask Sarah, what she was, you, we would ask the staff to come to us with a, how did you put that in wording?
A...
A resolution of intent.
Resolution of intent, yeah, that's the words. Thank you.
Sarah, did you catch that question?
I didn't know. I heard my name.
The question was, in what form would this need to come back to the city commission so that they can characterize what it is they're asking to be prepared?
The documents will be a cost-benefit analysis and a resolution of intent.
Okay. And I guess the only thing that I would just like to follow up on before we give the applicant or the public time to respond to that is, in the future, and I've made this request so many times, we have to evaluate, with the exception of the constitutional tax abatements that Mr. Schreg referenced, we have to evaluate every single one of these requests from the very start, every time. And I just hope that at some point, we can at least elucidate what's important to us, what we want to incentivize, and get some sort of metric in place so that we can do this equitably between different projects. Because right now, we start afresh every time, and there's just no guarantee, I mean, we do the best we can, but there's just no guarantee of consistency between decision to decision, or between commissions and commissions, since we do have a turnover every couple of years. So, my plea is, can we please, at least when we are receiving an economic development recommendation from the EDO, if we don't have specific criteria that we are going to apply when we make these decisions, that they make some kind of acknowledgement about the rationale in how they reached those numbers. Because to me, receiving a recommendation from the EDO, which I would expect to be able to count on their expertise, that's what they're there for, but in absence of any other information other than, this is what we recommend, and not being able to detail how that number came to be, it's completely unhelpful just for me. So, that's the only request that I would make specifically to Mr. Robinson and to the EDO board, that we at least have rationales for how we come to decisions on granting economic development incentive requests. We don't, I don't think we have any members of the public here, but the applicant is here, and if there's anything further that you would like to say before we take action?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Stephanie Carlin, on behalf of Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services. First of all, I would like to thank the EDO, the city commissioners, and other community partners for your continued commitment to recruiting and retaining industrial, retail, and other businesses in Saline County, and also encouraging and supporting entrepreneurship and business development in Saline County. As you know, Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services, formerly known as Superior Plumbing and Heating, has been a locally-owned company for over 40 years. In 2015, it became a 100% employee-owned company. With this expansion project totaling in excess of $9 million and the creation of over 20 premier jobs in Salina, it is disheartening that the commission is going to make a ruling based upon subpar information provided by the EDO. And Mayor Hodges, I do appreciate you stating that for you to do your job, that more information is required, but from Superior's perspective today, I feel as though that we are being penalized for lack of processes and lack of objective data that is considered by the EDO and passed on for consideration by the commissioners. We have done our best to analyze incentives that have been granted to locally-owned companies, as well as national and global companies. Earlier this evening, you talked about the significant community investment that you supported for Schwan's, and that is a great addition for our community. But as I mentioned before, that Salina is built on locally-owned companies, companies that have put in the hard work over decades to grow and prosper, and Superior fits that qualification. It's great that we can hit a grand slam with projects like the Schwan's Company, or a home run with projects like Great Plains Manufacturing, but it's these smaller companies that provide a majority of the employment opportunities in Saline County, and if we can't, if we cannot illustrate to the community that we have more support by our local partners to encourage and foster and retain and recruit and develop locally-grown companies, I think Salina will continue to not achieve its full capacity in terms of economic development. Just for the public's knowledge, I did want to state that we are looking at adding between 20 and 27 new jobs that are above the Saline County median wage, averaging anywhere between 22 to 20, sorry, averaging anywhere between $15 to $28 an hour. Again, this is above the median wage and based upon the Audi report that the Economic Development Organization commissioned. This does meet the qualifications for premier jobs. And so, again, I appreciate your commitment to Salina, I appreciate your consideration for us today, but I would ask that you delay your vote on supporting this project until you can receive some clear information to consider to make a knowledgeable and informed decision. Thank you.
Ms. Carlin?
Yes, sir.
Is there specific information that you think we have not heard or need to hear before we deliberate further?
Sure. As I mentioned, I tried to provide the commissioners with adequate information for consideration of this proposal. Quite frankly, the EDO, and this is the first time that we've gone through that process, and I don't believe that the EDO had as much comprehensive information as I shared with you today. We've received a lot of feedback from some key community partners since the EDO board meeting, and I tried to illustrate that information in the packet that I supplied to you today. So, you know, referring back to the members' agreement of what the EDO's roles and responsibilities are, part of that is to have metrics in place, but there was no guidance on those metrics. So upon guidance from the EDO specifically in highlighting the job growth and median wage and overall increase in payroll, I was able to supply that information to you. Any other questions?
I'll have one for staff, but not specifically for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Millard, Chief Financial Officer, Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services. Again, we're a little disappointed in the EDO board's recommendation that you all are considering today. I think when we came here today to meet with you all about our job growth, our company growth, we learned a lot from our presentation at the EDO. We thought we did, and we were trying to build it up to get a little bit more than what the EDO recommended. We thought it was a worthwhile project. Again, like we talked about, we're a 100% employee-owned company, we're in Salina, everything that we do gets reinvested into Salina. Of the jobs that we're going to create, the 20, 27 new jobs, almost 100% of those are going to be manufacturing. We talked, there's like one receiving job, maybe one or two electrician jobs, but the rest of it is all directly related to manufacturing. So we've got, we've got our sheet metal group, we've got our new controls and automation group, they're essentially all manufacturing jobs. That's the only thing that we're going to create, essentially, outside of help to get through every day in our normal operations. And I think, I think when we went through the EDO board meeting, like I said, we learned a lot from that. They met for quite an extensive time, just like you did, and we really appreciate your thoughtful consideration with that. When they read us their recommendation at the end, we were just obviously disappointed. At that time, they started asking us questions. The EDO board, I feel like they kind of dropped the ball, and maybe Mitch can attest to that, the EDO Executive Director, but we feel like they kind of dropped the ball, that they, they didn't ask us a lot of questions until we were done. They had already made their decision, and then they asked us follow-up questions for how they made their decision. So it was pretty disappointing. I know, Mayor Hodges, you've, you made the point that when you go to an executive session, that you try and evaluate each one of these circumstances yourselves, and based on the questions that we had, I know you did. And I asked that you would do that and not kind of lean back on the EDO board's recommendation, if you'd lean on it and look at it yourselves, but we do appreciate your time today.
What information do you think, had you given to the board before they deliberated, would have changed their final suggestion?
Well, I mean, one of the things that I just mentioned now was that essentially all the jobs that we're creating are manufacturing jobs. I don't think they quite entirely understood that, and maybe you all didn't understand that when we met with you before, which, again, this is a whole new process, right? It's not every day that you're going to come and ask for this kind of thing. It's not every day you get the opportunity to buy a significant new facility to grow into. But I think that was one of the things that they didn't understand, is that the new jobs that we're creating are directly related to manufacturing, which we're really excited about to do. We're really excited to...
Mark, could you explain what a PLC, what that's a person?
Sure, sure. So the...
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, oh, Mitch, Mitch Robinson, Executive Director, said, asked me to expand on what a PLC individual would do. So PLC, perjurable logistic controls, forgive me if I butchered that, controls and automation, essentially. What this individual does is they, they'll create the controls of industrial equipment, of manufacturing equipment, and they will create the controls and program them all together. So it's an integral, integrated part, integrated production part of manufacturing. So that's what they do. And so that's what, we have an opportunity to create that division. And so we have an opportunity to create and install programming and manufacturing equipment, that is the programming of that. And I don't think the EDO board entirely understood that. And again, that was our fault, that we didn't focus on... And again, that was our fault that we didn't focus on that because we didn't know what to focus on, what to talk about. But, you know, all, all of the jobs that we're working on doing is essentially in manufacturing. So I know that's a big part of what, where we want to go with, with these bonds, with this property tax abatement. But that's, that's essentially what we're trying to do with our company. That's why we changed the name, Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services, because that's more indicative of what we do now and will continue to grow into, into the future.
I do have a question. Are you finished? I don't mean to interrupt. What we hear a lot from potential developers is the "but-for" clause. If you were to receive funding or the property tax abatement at a 20% level as recommended by the EDO, what does that do to your expansion plans that you presented to us this evening?
Let's see that happens.
Mayor, may I ask a question that relates both to your question and Commissioner Davis's earlier? Am I correct that as you ask those questions, you're not asking them to disclose any of the confidential financial information that was the basis for the executive session, but instead-
Correct.
A more general, like, a more general impact. I'm not asking you to cite, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Exact figures, and I don't mean to-
Right. When, I don't know that-
I don't want you to feel, don't want them to feel any pressure to disclose them.
Right. And that's the only reason I asked the question, because I wanted to make sure that they, in their desire to provide you with, or present their case, that they didn't feel like they needed to disclose any confidential information, but that-
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah. So at any rate, like I said, the "but-for" question.
Sure.
So what, what does, what kind of an impact in general would the, a 20% property tax abatement have on your future plans?
So any help that we can get, what we're going to do is, is create that new controls and automation, that PLC division, right? And so when we talk about creating a new company from scratch, I know a lot of people, a lot of our Commissioners are business owners themselves, and then creating a company from scratch takes a lot of capital, right? And so it's got to come from somewhere. The property tax, tax abatement obviously helps. Well, we did go to the EDO Board to begin with. We asked for a cash grant to help fund this new division that we're going to create. Apparently, that didn't gain a lot of traction. But the property tax abatement, it'll help us to create that new division. You know, you can get an idea of what that is based on what the property tax is and what kind of percent we're talking about and how that compares to the annual salary of the jobs that we're looking at. And in one year, you can see what that does for, for the salaries of the jobs that we're talking about. Any more than that allows us to better fund that equipment, better fund those jobs, better fund development of a new division that is frankly is needed in the city of Salina. There's a lot of manufacturers here that could significantly use that service that don't have it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I'm, so the-
There's, I guess-
The project can proceed regardless. It's just a matter of the time it takes to implement the full scale that what you want to get to.
I guess our job creation will be limited or helped depending on what kind of assistance that we can get from the city.
Thank you.
And maybe not, maybe not in the, like, you know, obviously, the more help that we can get, the faster and the longer term growth that we can view, whereas the less help we get, the less creation, job creation there is that's available.
Okay. Thank you. And yeah, if you just had something quick to add, Ms. Carlin?
Yes, I'd like to address Commissioner Davis's question with regard to information that the EDO did not have when they considered their, their recommendation, specifically with regard to some of the confidential financial information that I shared with you during the executive session. But would like to reiterate that during the EDO session, one of their members referenced Superior Plumbing as a little plumbing company in Salina, and it was really evident that they did not have a full understanding of the scope of services. I believe you received a copy of the community partnership package that we prepared in preparation for the EDO meeting, and it was, again, frustrating and disheartening that the full breadth of families of companies that Superior has, as you can see, is far more than just a small little plumbing company. Regardless, we took that as feedback, and as we recently said, we changed the name of Superior to reflect the level of service and the types of services that we provide, which is the contracting and manufacturing services. And so again, I believe that their recommendation was not only made based upon maybe a misconception of what Superior was, but also as it relates to the full growth that we are proposing as a result of having increased capacity at the new building. I will share with you that we are anticipating 40% growth attributed to, I'm sorry, we're expecting 40% of our revenue growth in 2022 to be specific to manufacturing. In addition, the construction contracting divisions represents 58% of total revenue. And so I am not sure how the EDO came up with their 20%. As we discussed in the executive session, the core building that our operations will be in actually represents 65% of the total square footage of both buildings on the property located at 1655 Wall Street. So not only are we occupying 65% of the total square footage, 40% is coming directly from manufacturing, and 58% is coming from those contracting divisions, which again, have been identified as growth areas for our community. I wish I knew how the 20% was, was developed, but I think that is another reason why the Commissioners should think and take the new information that they received today to make their own decision. Thank you.
Thank you. How we look to the other Commissioners, do you feel like you have the information that you need at this point to make a decision? And do we want to proceed, or is this something that we want to defer?
To what extent can we proceed if the percentage is not finalized today?
In the end, that'll be finalized as part of the, the action, future action that you have to take. I think it'd be helpful for us and the applicant to have a sense of where he might be headed, but I, that doesn't mean that you couldn't end up at a different percentage before you take final action.
And I guess I would add that we didn't blindly just take the EDO's. We, you know, we did discuss the numbers. We discussed, you know, multiple things. This was not just blindly saying, you know, we're going to follow the EDO. We did have numerous discussions. You know, we came in and out of, of executive sessions several times. So I'll be interested to see how the cost benefit analysis and that comes out. That'll maybe give us a little more insight, too.
So I have a question, Mr. Skreggs, and perhaps for counsel. So the, the cost benefit analysis that's going to be prepared, obviously, is going to be based on the number that we either arrive on tonight or at a, at a future date, correct?
Sorry, I don't know if you heard the question, but it was that, how the cost benefit analysis is prepared in light of tonight's number and a future number, but that is a kind of a calculation that calculates the benefit, and that, that will be static, I would think. It's the cost side that would change. So as you would change your, if you change the percentage, I think that's pretty easy for us to adjust and, and tell you what the altered cost benefit might be. But Sarah-
Right. And it's my understanding that Mitch Robinson works with the company to get that run by the Department of Commerce. So I, I think you could request running them at different levels of abatement. I have seen that in the past on projects. So you could frequent, I mean, frequently, people will have them run at 100% exemption so they know worst-case scenario. In this, in this case, perhaps you could run one at 20% and 60%.
And I would tell the Commission, part of the, the, my understanding and part of the rationale for the cost of benefit is to confirm that you're not bestowing benefits in the, in excess of, or, or abatements in excess of the benefit. But, so I have every reason to expect it'll come back positive in terms of cost benefit. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're obligated to take it to a one-for-one pass-through.
Do you have one other question? I'm blocking her last name right now. Apologize.
Steel.
Steel, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we limited in what we can offer in terms of any of these abatements by the percentage of their jobs that are direct manufacturing?
So, Ms. Steel, the question was whether the governing body is limited in the percentage of abatement that can be offered as a function of the jobs created being manufacturing jobs?
There, there is no provision in the statute that pertains to what types of jobs are generated, nor the amount, nor the wages. That is something that each city needs to look at individually, and that's where your 91 resolution expressing your policy on the abatements under the economic development exemption maybe helps shed some light on things.
And I think that's what was prompting my question. That resolution specified three specific types of-
Correct. It's manufacturing, articles of commerce, warehousing, and research and development. Yes.
Right. And there's, there's two methods to granting a property tax exemption. That is a separate process from what we're discussing today, which involves industrial revenue bond. The net result is the same. You can grant a property tax exemption for up to 10 years, up to 100%, excluding certain things like capital outlay levies, special assessments. So it's, you know, you get the same result either method of exemption. It's just that the IRB also has a sales tax exemption, and it's a lot more expansive on the types of facilities that can be exempted through the IRB process.
Thank you.
All right. Having heard the information from Ms. Steel in terms of the cost benefit analysis, I mean, is that something that's worth our consideration of? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, at the rest of y'all to see where you'd like to, to go with this.
I would like to see it. I, you know, the two ways we've mentioned all along of expanding our business footprint is attracting new business and keeping and growing our existing business. And I think your statement about the metrics hit the nail on, on the head. You know, I, I like things that you can plug numbers in and turn your back, and you get a little card that comes out five seconds later and it tells you how much you get. And I realize this isn't always that clean, but it, just like for our special assessments, would really like to have a formula. Because it is hard to compare a, the value to a city of a billion-dollar project with a $10 million project. And there, you know, there are a lot of factors, but I think the cost benefit analysis is probably something that we should do whenever we have these to consider, or perhaps even the, the EDO have before it makes its decision. If that's, you know, I think the earlier in the process that information is known and shared, the easier it is to make a decision. So I'd like the staff to get started to consider the options, but I'm not as sold on limiting you to just the 20% option.
I think that's kind of where I'm at, too. I mean, if it's not unreasonable to do, you know, obviously, the EDO recommendation is 20%. The business owner is requesting 60. I mean, if, if we could have a cost benefit analysis prepared with 20, 40, 60, and then at least we'll be, we'll be understanding what we're gaining and what we're giving up and where, what exactly our individual preference is in terms of, of that. I don't know if that, if you'd be willing to, when we make the, the motion, that the cost benefit analysis include those additional figures or, or not.
And I'm not sure we really are making a motion. We're just giving you direction, aren't we?
Well, in light of all the conversation, a motion on the record would-
In the form of a motion, yes.
You were writing all of this down, Commissioner Hoppick.
So just to be clear on the process, I suppose, so what we're looking at potentially doing is agreeing that we are going to provide some form of abatement here, but with this motion, we would basically be directing staff to provide benefit, benefit analysis for us to review and come back with that exact percentage at a later date then.
If I can clarify, just, all you, all you're really doing this evening is instructing staff for the, you want us to get started on that process. It does not bind you to any abatement at all. You still retain full discretion further out in the process to, to the breadth of that, whether it's 0 to 100%. But having said that, it's helpful for staff in terms of the preparation. It's helpful for the applicant if you are able to give guidance and we can negotiate the agreement provisions accordingly. And that, you know, we certainly could prepare multiple cost benefit analysis as you see fit as a governing body.
I don't know what kind of time commitment that ties up for you guys, but I agree with the mayor that, you know, 20, 40, 60 is kind of the numbers I had in my head. I will say that I probably was leaning towards one of those percentages coming in here. But, you know, just talking a little bit more about this out in the open, I, I feel like the process has been maybe felt clumsy to the applicant, certainly, and would reiterate that going forward, some sort of metric would be terrific. And I tend to agree that maybe there is a feeling of being penalized because of a lack of formal process. At the same time, I, you know, trust the people we have and, and would like to be able to examine that reasoning a little bit more as well. But having that analysis and being able to revisit that percentage probably would be, behoove all of us, I would say.
If that was a motion, I'll second it.
I'm not going to repeat that whole thing.
If you want me to recap, I'd be happy to try to do that for you in terms of what would be helpful for staff. What I, what I think I'm hearing is that you want to instruct staff to initiate the industrial revenue bond process, which would amount to the necessary publications and preparation of public hearings. You'd like us to conduct a cost benefit analysis under multiple percentage scenarios, 20, 40, 60%. And somewhat in the side light, I think, you know, with that information, it wouldn't be that hard to dial into 35% or 37% or, you know, some alternate percentage if the, the conversation goes there. I think what I heard you say is that, that would also include sales tax exemption for machine, for equipment and materials. And then as we prepare the development agreement, if you would like us to, we can attach employment, agreed-upon employment levels to the agreed-upon percentage of abatement.
Yes. Second.
We have a motion and a second as specified by Mr. Skreggs's motion, and I don't think that we have anyone on Zoom anymore. And do we have anyone on, on, by the phone? Okay, so we, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Any other new business to bring before the Commission? Commission? And if not, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just forgot.